Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the study session to order. Roll call please.
Mayor McLean?
Here.
Councilmember Keller?
Here.
Councilmember Miranda?
Here.
Councilmember West?
Here.
Planning Commissioner Chair Berlin?
Here.
Commissioner Eichman?
Here.
Commissioner Ostrom?
Retire.
Commissioner Mesnada?
Here.
Parks, Recreation and Community Commissioner Chair Lindenheim?
Here.
Vice Chair Boone?
Here.
Commissioner Wong?
Here.
Commissioner Krukshink?
Here.
Commissioner Levinson?
Here.
Arts Commission Chair Rasmussen? Commissioner Shapiro?
Here.
Commissioner Dow?
Thank you very much. House Commissioner Boone, would you kindly leave us a flagrant question?
Hand over your card. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone signed up for public participation?
There is none so far.
Then we will move on to item number one.
Mayor McLean's got to hand it over.
I'd like to speak later when it concerns the trails coming, the trails in San Canyon. I didn't sign up.
Okay, would you kindly present a card then?
A card?
Yes. And we will allow you to speak actually now if you don't mind because public participation is...
Do you have a card? Would you like a driver's license?
I'm sorry, what?
I don't have a card, but...
Speaker's name.
Okay, well, that's fine. Why don't you just say your name please and show one out later?
Michael Erb.
Yeah, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Oh. I didn't know I had to be so quick. My name is Mike Erb. I live on Beaver Run, which is at the end of Plastry in San Canyon. Went north of Plastry at Canyon. I'd like to thank you all for having me here tonight. I'd like to give you a little bit of my credentials so I can give you a credibility when I'm talking about. I was with LA County Fire Department for 37 years. I worked as 17 years at fire camp nine, which is above San Canyon, which is the nation's busiest airborne pot shop crew. I retired as battalion fire chief. I was a helico battalion chief, which meant whenever we had a big fire, I was with the pilot in a helicopter above all the resources. So I would talk to the people on the ground. I would talk to the guys in the fix wing. And I would talk to the helicopters. Somebody crashed and we had all our firing straight. It's called our command vehicle. I was on a national type one management team as a safety officer and as a division group supervisor. So I went all over the country on events that were over $400,000 with fire and big events, which were earthquakes, floods, any type of management where we needed an IC team. I was involved with developing the urban search and rescue team for LA County Fire years ago, which has now really expanded. My reason for being here today is to talk about the completion of San Canyon's trail. There are commute equestrian and walking and all that. I understand that. It's very good. But in my course of all these years in Santa Clarita, I started in 1975 in the fire camp when Santa Clarita was not city, but still it was there. San Canyon basically is a thoroughfare. So I've seen where wires are down in Plastryda. One wire or pole goes down, which we saw in the sand fire. When one pole goes down, Plastry is over. And we all know that Plastry and San Canyon are now very populated with a lot of cars. But anyway, Plastryda will be stopped. So if that's happening and we have an event, Little Tahunga, which is just south of Plastry in the sand, that's over too, as we know. So those are two forms of egress in and out, which will be done. So with the sand fire and many other fires that a lot of you guys have seen here, San Canyon is our only resource out. So from about Condor Ridge, I come out of Beaver Run with my family. And a lot of people I know don't evacuate when they're supposed to. So they're going to say, okay, we're going to wait. And then these fires we call get angry, like in the sand fire by Bear Divide, they got real angry. So it started burning out into Sable Ranch, which, okay. So on Sable Ranch, a week ago, they had over 200 people filming. Okay, so that happens pretty regularly. Same with the Arkland Ranch. So my point is our only egress out of San Canyon is San Canyon north to the 14 freeway.
Hi, excuse me. I don't mean to interrupt. We usually allow three minutes, so could you just kind of finish up real quickly for us, please?
We call the fire department Escape Route. When I turn on Beaver Run, if there's a lot of cars and there's a traffic collision or horse thing, any hiccup on San Canyon, as the sheriff could detect, we're done. So then you're going to have to get out of your car and walk, okay? In the Paradise Fire, people couldn't get out of certain spots. They burned to death. You know, that could easily happen in San Canyon without these trails going through. Where my car can't go anywhere, I get out and I start hiking out towards the freeway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, first one. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, city manager, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor McLean and members of the city council, Chair Berlin and members of the planning commission, Chair Lindenheim and members of the Parks Recreation and Services Commission and Chair Rasmussen, he's not here, and members of the arts commission. Purpose of this study session is to review the recommended fiscal year budget for 2019-20. The operating budget involves a capital improvement program. As always, Santa Clarita's proposed budget is balanced and on schedule. Staff has been working on the proposed budget for the last five months, developing a financial plan that is consistent with the city council's goals while providing the funding necessary to deliver exceptional services to Santa Clarita residents and businesses. This meeting will provide you with the detailed information about the proposed budget. This evening I will discuss the state of the budget as well as the budget goals, provide a summary of the overall proposed budget, review the additions to the operating budget as well as the capital improvement program, and then end with a review of the general fund, projected revenues and expenditures. I am pleased to share that I am presenting a growing ballast budget to the city council and commissions. As a whole, the recommended budget for fiscal year 1920 totals 22.5 million... excuse me, 225 million point... I'm trying to have it again. $225.8 million. This includes, again, funding for the capital improvement program, operations and maintenance, as well as debt services personnel. When compared to the current year's adopted budget, this represents an 11.3% increase, which is the equivalent to approximately $22.9 million. This increase is primarily due to $7 million in the capital improvement program in addition to $5 million that will be going towards the city's pension obligation, which I will discuss in detail later. Total general fund revenues are projected to increase next fiscal year by 2.9%. This is based primarily around growth in property taxes due to recent annexations and increased valuation citywide. As I mentioned to you in the February Budget Committee meeting or Budget Study Session, the forecast for the next year looks stable. However, the economy is beginning to show signs of slowing and we should begin to prepare for a possible correction in 2020 or 2021. We continue to maintain a healthy operating reserve, which currently represents 20% of the general fund operating expenditures, or almost $18 million. The city's AAA credit rating from standard reports remains intact and was reconfirmed this year. Overall, I am happy to report the organization is in solid financial footing. Historically, every four to six years, the U.S. experiences an economic slowdown. It has been 10 years since now since the winding down of the Great Recession. This period of economic growth has been the second longest in the nation's history by only a few months. The record, I believe, is about 120 months and we're at month 118 right now. For this reason, we need to be prepared and therefore, while there are a few large projects within the budget, again, I am recommending a conservative budget to keep the organization secure and looking out over the next five years. As a reminder, we are faced with funding challenges associated with building new infrastructure. The operating cost of that new infrastructure, maintaining existing infrastructure, increases in our public safety services, as well as CalPERS pension funding. While all of these challenges seem significant, the council is positioned to effectively deal with these liabilities over time. The conservative approach has and will continue to position our organization to handle these challenges and continue to provide a high quality of life for residents into the future. The recommended budget is in alignment with the city council's budget philosophy. This has consistently proven to be a successful approach to maintaining a balanced and responsible budget. The budget was developed based on these eight principles and you'll see that reflected as I go through them. In terms of priorities for fiscal year 1920, I'd like to first speak to our commitments. Most importantly, the implementation of Santa Clarita 2020. Almost in its final year, this aggressive plan promises major improvements in the community by 2020. I am happy to report that we have made tremendous progress towards the completion of all the action items identified in the plan and I am confident that they will be completed by the end of 2020, including a brand new sheriff station. Well, maybe that will be... that one may not quite make it. The community center in Candy Country as well. Now I'd like to brief you on some of the additions to the recommended budget for the next fiscal year. I will begin with the proposed additions to the budget that are intended to support the public safety, quality of life theme. The cost of building adjustment of almost 5% is included in the budget for the sheriff's contract, which amounts to an ongoing commitment of $1.182 million. This year I am recommending an additional $250,000 in general fund and drug forfeiture funding for strategic data-driven overtime operations. This one-time funding will be used to proactively address specific crime trends in the community throughout the year and maintain the city's historically low crime rate. The next item under public safety is $234,000 for the liability trust fund. A trust account funded by contract cities to reimburse Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department for costs related to litigation resulting from contracts in the operations. This year represents a half percent increase over last fiscal year for a total obligation of 11%. $60,000 is being recommended to hire an additional J-team consultant to increase the drug intervention efforts in the community. This consultant will complement the established successful J-team and focus on the adult side of drug intervention and education. $25,000 will address the need for increased law enforcement presence at large city events throughout the year, including light up Main Street, Fourth of July Parade and America. $10,000 is also being recommended to provide two additional advisors for the Defy and SCV program for the Castaic High School and Sequoia Charter School. LA County currently contributes $30,000 each year to this program and we are in discussions with them to increase that contribution. For building and creating community, one-time funding of $200,000 in public library funds is being recommended to enhance the library materials being circulated, both in quantity and quality, to better meet the needs of the growing community. A new position at our libraries is being recommended at an ongoing cost of just over $90,000 for a technical services librarian to manage the selection and materials for the city in print, digital and electronic resources. $45,000 in TMD funding or tourism marketing district funding is being recommended for year two of the PACE bike share pilot program. This program is seeing very positive results and staff continues to pursue its sponsorship to continue and expand the program with the goal of that being a self-sustaining program. $38,000 is being recommended to fund an ongoing temporary public art program identified in the council-approved arts master plan. For community beautification, $1.5 million is being requested for landscape maintenance development reserve projects. This request will address the planned repair and replacement of infrastructure maintained by the LMB. Each project is identified by special district staff through consultation with each zone's contract landscape monitoring contractor and this is spread out over approximately 52 different districts throughout the city. Ongoing funding of $100,000 to $15,000 is being requested to support landscape and tree maintenance services for the newly annexed Plum Canyon and Skyland Ranch areas. $78,000 has been requested for repairs and improvements to nine hybrid park sites maintained by our contractors and parks district. A one-time request of $20,000 in gas tax funding is being recommended to continue the longstanding partnership with North LA County Volunteer Center, formerly known as Hands-on SCV, which provides litter and weed abatement services for the city. A one-time request of just over $200,000 is being recommended to replace the existing storage area network, or SAM, that provides powers to data center at City Hall and transit maintenance facility. A new groundskeeper, too, position is being recommended specifically to maintain the more than 10,000 acres of open space and 47 miles of trails. One-time funding of $90,000 is being recommended to fund the programs that will help the city reach the state's goal of 75% diversion rate by 2020 and reduce illegal dumping throughout the city. $82,000 is being recommended to drainage benefit assessment funding for ongoing maintenance and future infrastructure costs in the newly annexed areas of Plum Canyon. $55,000 is being recommended for the ongoing signal maintenance operations, again, in the annexed areas of Plum Canyon and Skyland Ranch. $44,600 is being recommended to the stormwater fund to provide an increase in the contract for street sweeping services due to the increase in minimum wage. Under the theme of proactive, transparent and responsive government services, I am recommending $1.2 million in one-time funding for contract services to pay for a plan review, building inspection, and funding to set our plans to external plan review on an as-needed basis. In 2018, the city conducted more than 21,000 inspections and issued more than 2,300 building permits. And as we look over the next fiscal year, we expect that work will remain constant. $472,000 in one-time PEG funding is being recommended to finalize the enhancements and upgrades to the city council chamber's outdated audiovisual system, which is nearly 20 years old. $250,000 in ongoing funding is being recommended in technology services budget to cover increased costs related to new or existing contract obligations, software licenses and rising support maintenance costs. An associate planner is being added in the planning at an ongoing cost of just over $121,000 to assist with the heavy workload due to the increased entitlements we're seeing being processed, as well as the overall growth of the city through annexations. A public works inspector is being recommended at initial first-year cost of $112,000 as well as a vehicle to assist in the increased workload due to more capital projects being completed citywide. $100,000 is being recommended to purchase 550 new licenses at Microsoft Office 2019 for the next three years. Just over $84,000 is to fund a project technician and administrative services to alleviate the heavy workload in the areas of treasury, debt administration, grants administration, as well as budget preparation. $40,000 to fund a part-time position in human resources for the next two years to perform critical projects, including updating job descriptions and implementing the new ERP program that we'll be doing in the next fiscal year. Our HR division has been very busy with over 300 recruitments completed in the last three years. And I expect this trend to continue with a large percentage of employees eligible to retire in the next coming years. $37,500 is being recommended in PEG funding to support the continued operation of the public access television studio and to replace dated production video equipment. Another part of the sustaining public infrastructure is the annual vehicle and equipment replacement element of the budget. When a vehicle or piece of equipment reaches its certain age and condition is no longer cost-effective to maintain, therefore, as part of our annual vehicle and equipment replacement program, I am recommending a budget of $343,000 first fiscal year 1920 to replace four vehicles and three pieces of equipment. $2.5 million is also being recommended in transit funding to replace four out of eight early generation CNG local buses nearing the end of their useful life. Replacement buses will be equipped with near-zero emission engines. Before I dive into the capital improvement program portion of the budget, I wanted to take a moment to discuss the organization's pension liability and my recommendation of additional payments this year and next fiscal year to pay down this obligation. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the liability is largely due to CalPERS overall fund performance over the last decade, which requires cities to contribute additional funds to cover the cost between the actual performance and their 7.5% investment target return. To simplify, each time the fund does not meet its target, CalPERS issues these mini loans, which accumulates interest at the seven and a half percent rate. It is called the unfunded accrued liability, which bridges that gap. So right now, the city is currently funded at 74.9% with a UAL of approximately $45 million. As I stated in the last meeting, our goal is to bring our employee pension funding status to 90% over the next few years and pay down that UAL balance. Thanks to the city council's support, we utilize a similar approach in our OPEB or our retiree healthcare liability. And I'm happy to report that by using this approach and this forward thinking, the city is now 100% fully funded on that liability. By making additional payments to pay down our pension obligation, our organization will be much more stable and predictable. Also, by making these one-time payments, we would realize significant savings from the interest on the UAL balance, or otherwise paying seven and a half percent on those loans. Therefore, for this year and next fiscal year, I am recommending an additional $5 million payments for each of those years. Combined, these one-time payments will bring our funded status to just over 86% this next fiscal year. Proactive and aggressive plans like these are what makes Santa Clarita so unique. We consistently make a commitment with the support of the city council to fix issues early and before they become a larger problem in the future. Now moving into the capital improvement program, I'd like to give you some highlights for the 1920 proposed program. I'm recommending a budget of approximately $36.6 million, which is 27.5% or $7.9 million higher than the current year's adopted capital budget. Other recommended $6.6 million in rebudgets, oh, excuse me, of this, there's about $6.6 million that are rebudgets or projects that are this current fiscal year moving into next fiscal year. The other increase is primarily due to an additional $1.5 million to the annual overlay and slurry sub program to bring that to a total of $13 million. I would like to note that this figure does not include additional contracts that will be brought to the council at a later date and separately appropriated at a time of award in the amounts of approximately $93 million. The estimated figure includes contracts for the construction of the new sheriff station at approximately $53 million, the Candy Country Community Center at approximately $36 million, and the Vista Canyon Metrolink Station at approximately $4 million, all of which have been accounted for and have funding set aside, but won't be budgeted until the contracts are awarded. So at this point, I'd like to go over some of the highlights of the new budgets. Under the theme of building and creating community, Phase Six of the Intelligent Transportation System, or ITS, will total $1.6 million. This will enhance the existing adaptive signal performance, providing real-time data to the city's traffic management center and eliminating gaps in our fiber optic system. $1.5 million is being budgeted for the design and the right-of-way for the Railroad Avenue Class I bike trail. This project will design approximately 1.4 miles of trail along Railroad Avenue from Oak Ridge Drive to 13th Street and is funded with grants. $1.5 million is also being recommended for the design of the Central Park Buildout Project, which will add four additional full-size multipurpose fields, a restroom, additional parking and upgrades to the dog park to keep up with the reservation and recreation demands of the city. $565,000 for the Sierra Highway Traffic Signal Interconnect and Adaptive System Project. This project will incorporate Sierra Highway into the city's adaptive traffic signal system and include several intersection improvements along this roadway for our first foray into working more closely with Caltrans and getting some collaboration and cooperation on the traffic along their segment of the Sierra Highway. Approximately $450,000 is being recommended to continue the San Canyon Trail Project. This funding should complete the Phase Six portion of the trail and move us closer to finishing the trail in its entirety. $100,000 is being recommended to begin the design of the community's first BMX bike track, planned to be located next to the outdoor basketball court, just above the Aquatics Center, for a total budget of $250,000. Under community beautification, this year's citywide major thoroughfare, median turf removal, is budgeted at $1.6 million. This will fund the existing, or remove existing turf and replace it with new landscape, install appropriate irrigation and new concrete paver maintenance strips along Villa Princesa between Sierra Highway and Jason Drive. After this project is complete, we will have only three roadway sections left to go in and rehab. That includes McBean Parkway, U-Haul Ranch Road and segments of Lyons Avenue. $350,000 is recommended for irrigation and master valve and flow sensor installations. These systems automatically shut down broken irrigation systems, preventing the loss of resources and this is spread out throughout the other leaves. The citywide reforestation program for fiscal year 1920, to maintain our city's award-winning status, Trees to the USA, will total $175,000. This includes planting of a minimum 400 trees to fill remaining vacancies along our major thoroughfares. For sustaining public infrastructure, the annual overlay and slurry program will total $13 million. And again, this is an increase of $1.5 million over the current year's budget. $2 million is being recommended for transit maintenance facility upgrades and equipment replacement. It's hard to believe, but this city facility is already 13 years old. This project includes replacement of the bus wash, baylins, the in-ground pits and the computerized HVAC system. The project will also redesign the bus yard entrance gate as well as repair and slurry at the parking lot. The annual concrete rehab program is being recommended at $400,000 this year to address necessary repairs to sidewalks throughout our community. I am excited to announce the backlog for these repairs will be eliminated by the end of 2019 through this program. The things city managers get excited about. The annual highway safety improvement program will provide pedestrian crossing enhancements at seven intersections with channelized right-turn lanes at a total cost of just under $250,000. $212,000 is being recommended for the annual Paseo Bridge Maintenance Program. Five bridges will receive maintenance and painting next year with this funding to help keep the bridges in good serviceable condition. $624,000 is being recommended to construct sidewalks along Sierra Highway from the newly constructed community center all the way to Skyline Ranch. The annual trail fence replacement program will replace deteriorating fences along the Southport Trail at a cost of just over $100,000. In addition to these major projects, I'm recommending additional funding for traffic circulation projects and maintenance of city parks and facilities. $2.5 billion is being recommended for circulation projects, which total, which includes signal modifications, battery backup systems, lane striping and circulation improvements. $2.1 billion is being funding is being recommended for upgrades and maintenance at our city parks. This includes the annual playground resurfacing at Todd Longshore Park, sports court resurfacing at New Hall Park, playground equipment replacement at North Oaks Park, aquatic center pool slide renovation and the sports field replacement at Central Park. This funding also includes money for the HVAC systems at the Aquatic Center and Candy Country Park, replacement of the pool surge pit at Santa Clarita Park and replacement of the roof at the Aquatic Center. $702,000 is being recommended for maintenance and improvement to the city facilities, including HVAC improvements, carpet replacement and LED retrofitting at City Hall, new flooring lighting at the metrolink stations, electrical panel upgrades of the business incubator and a main sewer line replacement at Corporate Yard. So you can see a lot of repair, a lot of maintenance, a very good balance to creating new projects by maintaining the infrastructure that we have and ensuring that our city facilities are always at a very high standard. I would now like to go over the general fund, the general fund revenues. General fund revenues are projected at approximately $114 million. Staff constantly monitors these revenues to make sure we're looking at what's happening with them and how they can impact the budget. The following figures are compared to last year's adopted budget. So for sales tax, our leading general fund revenue source is projected at a total of $37 million, which is flat when compared to the current year. So as normally as we talk about the budget, sales tax is one of our larger, that's obviously the largest tax revenue. We pay a lot of attention to sales tax because it's also an indicator of what's happening, but a very early indicator of what's happening with the economy. And so with sales tax, one of the things we're really paying attention to is, as I mentioned in February, we saw our first decrease in quarterly sales tax revenue due to a decrease in auto sales locally. Historically, sales tax has been, again, the earliest indicator of a correction in the economy and so we're going to really pay attention to what's happening with that. So again, when we're looking at the increases in our general fund revenues, sales tax is usually estimated at 2%, 3%, 4%, as high as 5% historically. We are now looking at a flat sales tax projection. And as we go over the next four to five years, we're looking at zero to one, nothing higher than 2% increases in that revenue source. So we're going to pay close attention to this and really watch what's going on with it. Property tax and property tax and motor vehicle license fees are estimated at $19.6 to $18.4 million respectively. Together, these revenues represent a 14% increase due largely to recent annexations as well as the increased valuation citywide where home prices have been stabilized. Property tax is almost the opposite of sales tax as it tends to lag the economy and really is one of those steady, one of those really steady revenue sources for us. Franchise fees are projected to increase marginally next fiscal year at a total of $7.8 million. The franchise fee is imposed on various utilities such as cable, trash and gas. Parks and Recreation fees are projected to be flat at $4.3 million. TOT or Transit Occupancy Tax is projected to be flat at $3.3 million. And again, these estimates are estimates that are based on the information that we have right now and they're subject to changes as new economic information comes in. General fund operating expenditures are recommended to total $113.6 million. Not only is the recommended budget balanced, but it also maintains an operating surplus of just under $400,000. Public safety continues to consume the largest portion of the general fund budget at 24%. at 24% or nearly $28 million. The budget process, again, continues to provide opportunities to inform the council and the commissions and the public about the state of our city finances as well as the financial plan for the next year. We have several meetings between now and the adoption of the budget, which includes an optional subcommittee meeting on May 9th, will be before the planning commission on June 4th, to the City Council for a public hearing June 11th, and back to the council for adoption on June 25th. As I close, I want to acknowledge the City Council, the commissions, and the Budget Committee comprised of Mayor McLean, Mayor Protim Smythe for your leadership and disciplined approach to budget. Because the City Council's good decisions, we were able to create a balanced budget that funds several council priorities while also providing the organization or preparing the organization for uncertainty if the economy continues to decline. I want to remind you that the budget number presented today could change by the time of the public hearing in June, and I'm confident that our projections probably won't make too many modifications. I want to thank the budget team, each of the city's department staff. There's literally hundreds of accounts and hundreds of pages of work that are really distilled into a presentation of 30 to 40 minutes. They have done a tremendous job of really prioritizing balancing the needs of the community and putting together what I believe is a conservative but responsible budget for the quality of life in San Coria. So that concludes my presentation of the budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That's quite something. I want to also thank you and staff. I know this does not happen without hours upon hours upon hours of work and thought and maintaining our balanced budget, especially with the pensions and such doing what we're doing. It's amazing. You see, in other different cities, they don't have, they have a problem with sidewalk rehab, and they wonder how in the world they're going to pay for all of that and to protect their residents as they're walking along the sidewalks, and we're taking care of that. Same with potholes. I just saw an article, I mean, I saw a news thing on TV just before I got here where there are, I think it was San Jose, tons of potholes, and they don't know how they're going to fix them. Well, we don't have that problem because we're smart about it. And I just want to thank you very much for doing that. Council, do we have any questions or comments?
Thank you. First off, I want to answer what the mayor said. I want to thank you all for your hard work and diligence with the people's money. Yeah, the council has a big say in everything, but I think the staff is really geared to really make sure that we stay on the right side of fiscal sanity, if you will. So I thank you for that. I do have a couple of questions. One is regarding the police security, mainly relating to speeding in the community. I know last year, I think it was last year, we did ask for it and get some more motorcycle patrolmen for people. What are we doing? How is that working for us, and do we need to do more?
Yes, you're correct. The traffic safety has been a big priority for a number of years. So as we've talked about before, we have what we call the kind of an approach, a three-point approach, which is educating motorists to be, to have more awareness and to slow down and not be distracted. We've got the physical engineering aspect of the strategy, which is to create infrastructure and strategies to prevent physical collisions of vehicles. And then the third component of that is enforcement. And what we've seen is over the last two years in particular, the number of citations that have gone, that have been issued have gone this way. And the number of collisions that have occurred have gone down. So there's a direct correlation, correlation between those two factors. We are now at seven motor officers. We just, the council just approved the addition of a motor officer just a couple of months ago, or maybe it's not a month ago. So they are very active on the streets. The number of citations will probably reach almost 20,000 this year. So I think that speeds are certainly starting to slow down. Again, one of the primary things we look at in terms of effectiveness is collisions and injury-related collisions. And we've seen decreases of over 20% in both of those factors. So they definitely have an impact on those two things, but it's a daily, a daily chore. And it's, we've also emphasized pedestrian and cyclist safety. And with the exception of the last two months, where we had a little bit of a spike in those two fatalities, we were two, we were running two years strong on no pedestrian or cyclist fatalities. So, you know, doubling down on those efforts and looking at crosswalk, red light citations, all of those things to, again, bring more awareness and make sure motorists are aware that, you know, they are out there. They are out there.
Okay, in a similar vein, the other, the other question I had was regarding traffic, traffic flow. And again, it was good to see that, that we're addressing it. Is there anything else we need to be doing that we're not doing to improve traffic flow in the city?
I know, I know. I think with traffic, there's a number of elements that go in. So there's capacity issues in terms of the number of vehicles based on the capacity we have. And I think the engineering staff has done a tremendous job of going and looking at their existing system and figuring out how do we squeeze as much capacity out of the roadway that we currently have. And you see a number of lane and striping changes throughout the years. You've seen a number of changes to single, to double, to triple S. So a lot of circulation changes based on the current capacity that we have. The other thing is we need to build roads. And so we are in the process of looking at the development and creation of two roadways. The council approved the first phase of Doc Lighter in terms of that, that project, which is, we're currently in the process of looking to design that. And that will come back for the council's consideration this fiscal year. And then the second part of that is the Princessa, or the extension of the Princessa. And that is currently part of the project that is being proposed over in the NTS area. And so we are, we are trying, both of them, trying to develop those roadways, trying to squeeze more capacity out of what we have. And finally, the third component of that is the ITS, which I talked about, the Intelligent Transportation System, which is trying to, I don't use the word synchronize, because that's just not, based on our, the system of the traffic we have, it's just not going to happen. But we try the best to time the lighting system to be as efficient and effective as possible. And so we have literally invested probably in excess of $15 million in that system. And what you're hearing now is the Adaptive Traffic Management System. And so as opposed to going out doing survey studies and then setting times based on studies, this adaptive system really is providing real-time data back to our traffic center and is automatically adjusting those signal timings based on the traffic that's on the roads. And we started with a pilot project in the Canyon Country area, and we saw differences in those signal timings based on the day of traffic. And some of them were shortened, some of those phasing was longer, but it's reflective of what the real data is showing on an ongoing basis. So those are, that's how we're trying to deal with it. And I think, again, we have to do all three of them because, as we know, building roadways is a very, very expensive, very expensive venture, so that's.
Thank you. Relevant to our public speaker, you brought up some very good points. And we'll talk back on the sand fire in 2016. And perhaps, I know we've got our Captain Lewis with us, thank you, sir. But we had a major meltdown when it came to the evacuation plan during that sand fire in the Sand Canyon area. And I know there was some discussion subsequent to that, that there would be something put into place that hopefully would be a plan of action that would prevent a similar occurrence. So the question is, have we created an evacuation plan today that will put women and children at the priority and be able to move our families out of the Sand Canyon area if we had another similar incident that we did in 2016? I'll be very candid with you. I love horses, but they are way, way behind families, women, and children. I think sometimes we've had our priorities a little bit askew. But have we, have we put that plan together that we talked about?
I believe the answer to your question is fire, fire and sheriff have met. They have looked at alternatives of how to get people in and out. I think they've discussed everything from one-way movements in and out of the canyon. The sand fire was, was, was bad. And it was an example of poor communication. That the, the fact that it took so long to get out was, was, was human error to be my friend.
But we attempted to evacuate all of Sand Canyon at once. And that is just not, it's not possible. Even if we had both Placerita and Sand Canyon completely open, you literally cannot evacuate Sand Canyon in its entirety. It needs to be broken up into probably at least three different sections to be able to effectively get the evacuation accomplished.
Yeah, and that, and that, you know, the sand fire is an example of a bunch of things all happening at the same time. And the sand fire moved quicker, I think, than anybody anticipated. It jumped literally miles from where it started. And so I think that, I agree that there, and I know that Captain Lewis has met with Chief, with Chief Anderson. And we can provide something to the council just to see if you have ear awareness of it. But that is an example of one, that fire moved very quickly. So even if you have one, two, or three, it literally jumped from what would have been one all the way to three. The other part of that is there are areas in this community where people do not like to evacuate. And so fire has, fire and the Sheriff's Department have problems getting people to evacuate when they're asked to. So we, I think they try their best, but we will provide some information to the council just so you guys all have information on what they've come up with.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd just like to, I'd like to publicly thank Count Striplin, who has kept us on with great staff, completely on track for 2020. And I think those projects are all moving ahead miraculously. They're expensive, they're necessary, beautiful things are moving, and it will make a difference for the next 50 or 100 years. And I'm very grateful to have been part of the process to come up to speed with things like a new sheriff station, a new senior center, new community centers. These are all things are important. I was out at the Cast Lake Shelter today. We have a, we have a trailer that assists with, with animals out there, and there's a medical one coming. They are building out, as you know, Cam, an evacuation center up there for animals. So that is an important resource because we have these devastating fires. Quite often, you can't go south, nobody can come up from the 514. And quite often, you can't go north on the 14 because there's five there too. So I will say to Sand Canyon, you have done miraculously a good job with your fire safety council. And I agree with Bob, the most important thing is life. And I'm thrilled that we have the kind of city we have that takes piece by piece and looks at these things incremental and says, okay, how do we make it better with the resources we have? So I think we should stay focused on doing that. I heard you say, Cam, $450,000 for the phases on Sand Canyon. So will that get us done in two to three years? Close?
Close, yes.
So we're moving ahead on those phases. What I like about that for that particular community is that community was never designed to be a freeway bypass or thruway or any other such crazy thing that they're dealing with. And I want people to, at minimum, when there's police and sheriff and emergency medical, to be able to walk out and to be able to walk out safely. So we have that all over our city, so hopefully within three years, we can get done in that area and help, as Bob said, make sure we have good evacuation planning that everybody understands because it's really important. So I was going to just ask you, do you think our sales tax, we get back from online sales, what, what's actually owed to the city? Does any city get it back?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Is there anything we as a city and joining with other cities can do about that? Because it's harming the way cities operate.
It's interesting. I often talk to large groups of people, and I always ask the question, you know, as it relates to sales tax, the reality is that whole model is changing. Online sales continues to increase at double-digit figures every year. Brick-and-mortar stores continue to close at an alarming rate. And so how that affects funding and city finances is, as opposed to cities getting a 4% of their sales tax allocation, that money goes into the county pool and is distributed on a proportional basis. So, you know, we don't get nearly the amount of money we would get if that was tracked back to the city. That is going to change eventually. There's an effort at the state level, it was on a statewide city's sales tax committee that made recommendations, I believe that they're aiming to do some kind of ballot initiative to deal with it. But it will require state law changes and will require a significant change on how online retailers collect retail out of sales tax. There was a recent case that said that the state can collect sales tax on out-of-state sales. And so that will probably be the first element that is the easiest to deal with. But all of the in-sales, in-state taxes will take a little bit of figuring out to deal with. But no, that, that is a significant challenge for us, absolutely.
I think it's an important thing to address. I figure if the IRS can manage to get ours to pay every year, we should be able to get our sales tax back as computers to do this thing. Anyway, I just want to thank everybody and all the staff that's worked on all of this. You do an amazing job every year. Thank you. It's much appreciated.
Planning Commissioner, any comments?
I just wanted to thank you for including the planning commission in this process and that we look forward to our June 5th public hearing. And I was glad to see that the planning department's getting another planner.
Anyone else? Okay, the Commissioner.
Again, thank you. It's a lot of work, obviously, and a lot of information. So I tried to absorb as much as I could, and I was trying to follow you on the capital improvement program in terms of what's being done in parks and such on Railroad Avenue Bike Trail. Central Park Build-Out, I think you mentioned it, but it was moving along so quickly. A million and a half dollars. What are we getting for that?
So Central Park Build-Out is a concept we've been talking about for about the last year, six months to a year. And that is looking at what is the greatest needed community. And obviously, as you are all aware, we have a large segment of Central Park that is undeveloped that was originally designed, we actually have a design for a tennis center, which was part of that build-out. And as we really look at what the needs and demands are for recreational standpoint, field space far exceeds the need for tennis space. So our proposal as part of this budget is to create, fund the design of the build-out of that section of Central Park to include four sports fields, restroom, additional parking, upgrades to the dog park, which will really help meet that new demand. So in essence, what that does is it takes the passive play area that's, that's green now, but it's passive, it's not really sports fields, formalizes that into two new sports fields, and then takes the other additional dirt space now and creates two additional sports fields that would be available for all the recreational needs throughout the community. And in regards to dealing with, you know, begs the question, what about the tennis center and the tennis interest? We have been working with the school districts very closely to get additional access to the schools and their tennis courts. We've also done a survey in the community and found that there are quite a few tennis courts that are out there. But also looking at how do we space them throughout the community, in either existing parks or upcoming parks, to kind of piece it together throughout the community as opposed to creating just one tennis facility.
Appreciate that. As you probably know, and certainly Assistant City Manager Frank Oviedo knows, we've been approached by the pickleball folks that apparently that's, the demographics have changed, and of course, the demands have changed. And I'm wondering if there's any consideration for citing pickleball courts there.
Yeah, we're well aware of the pickleball. So there's kind of a dual, dual issue there because it's not just pickleball courts outdoor, it's pickleball courts indoor. So I think the recreation staff is looking for opportunities to increase the opportunities indoor, which we've been asked to do. And as we're bringing on new parks, I think Plum Canyon, Skyline, Skyline are another opportunity. We have spaces within parks that we can do courts. They're, they're not a huge amenity, so there are opportunities to go back and look for places to put additional courts. But yeah, we're well aware of that. I think one of the new parks will have additional pickleball space, but we're also looking to figure out how to program additional indoor pickleball space because that's obviously an issue with the others as well.
Thank you. Do you think, Commissioner?
I appreciate the addition of the fields. Like you said, the, the demand for tennis has gone down. And, but the demand for fields, we just had a report at commission last week, and we don't serve even half of what we are given in requests for all of our users. Yeah. And so that's a great decision. Really appreciate that. And adding a BMX facility is fabulous. It's been a long time that people have been requesting that. That, in addition to opening an archery range, I mean, I really attribute it to the can-do attitude of Frank Oviedo and his direct access to the city manager. Seems to be a really wonderful thing, and we don't want to lose him. Seems to be a really wonderful thing, and we don't want to lose him.
I called you Frank.
Mr. Money. And we appreciate that by the end of 2019, we'll have our first universally accessible playground for children with disabilities in Santa Clarita. That is extremely exciting. I can't wait for that, and neither can the community that is so underserved in this area. It will bring about opportunities for families to feel a part and included in a way that they can't do right now. Even though some playgrounds you can go to, to have a place where you can actually create socialization events, because the one thing that a child with a disability has is not only the barrier of their disability, but the barrier to friends and to socialization. And this will really help with that. So I'm really excited about that and us going in that direction. And a question regarding our cybersecurity. You said that you're going to add 250,000 to tech services, and I just saw, I think it was 60 Minutes, where some cities were held for ransom because of, you know, their lack of cybersecurity, and I wondered how we sit.
That's a great question. We're not being held ransom. We have, we've really stressed cybersecurity for a very long time. So the staff has constantly are, you know, applying security measures, whether it's monitoring upgrades to software, looking to see what holes are out there that are being exploited, buying new equipment to protect the firewalls and so forth. But the other thing that we've done for probably more than 10 years is we actually hire an outside firm to attempt to penetrate the system and look for vulnerabilities in our system. So that is a contract that we've had, again, for over a decade, that we have someone from the outside, always looking from the outside to try to get in. And it helps us make sure that we are aware of those vulnerabilities, that they do see something that we're dealing with proactively and not in a very reactive way. So we spend quite a bit of time on this.
Okay. I figured you probably did, you used to be in IT, so yeah, that's great. And I too am excited about the sidewalks being done this year. When you go to other cities and you see, you know, the problems that they have, and I always think, aren't they concerned about liability? But I mean, that is fantastic, so.
You know, and this is really, I'm just going to brag for a second, which I usually don't do, but it's really an amazing thing when you drive around the community and you, I task people, I task people to go do it because every time I drive, I'm always, I'm always better off, right? It's always licking you things. And so, you know, I task people to say, look, drive around the community and show me an area that has displaced sidewalks, particularly anything of any substance, like when you're driving to the, you know, to the LAX or anyplace else where you see these many pyramids and these things that are just completely impassable. So, you know, I task people, tell me if you see them. You know, potholes. I love being able to call staff and say, hey, there's a pothole on this street. Nine times out of 10, when I drive by it, by the time I come back around by the end of the day, it's already proactively fixed. So there are not a lot of potholes that you see for more than 24 hours. And that's because staff is proactively out there addressing those issues. And the third thing is graffiti.
Yep.
You know, it's, there are not many communities that can say, you know, that they drive around, they don't see that, they don't see this, they don't see that. People don't realize that we have a graffiti problem in Santa Clarita. You don't see it, but we have a problem. You know, they removed over 16,000 tags this year or last year. And we spend over a million dollars a year to simply get back to where we started. And so, but, you know, that's unfortunately a cost of doing business here within the community and with society. But those are things that most communities, that people that live in those communities can't say that. They can't say, I drive to work and I don't see potholes, I don't see graffiti, I don't see sidewalks that are destroyed. And so that's something I'm very proud of, and I think the staff with the leadership of the council, setting a very high expectation for the quality of life in the community, having commissions all working together in different facets of it, to make this place a very unique and special place to live. Thank you for bringing that up.
I agree.
Commissioner Levison?
I'd like to start by dittoing everything that she's excited about because I'm excited about all those things too, we usually are in agreement. And it gives me the opportunity then to talk about some other things. A little bit of levity to pickleball players or the aging tennis players. Can't play tennis anymore and have given up on having a tennis center, and so they're now doing that. So I think that's part of it. I must have missed something. I saw 281,000 on the screen for the San Canyon Trail, and then I heard 400,000. What's the 400,000?
Well, we had a meeting the other day, and the Parks Commissioner beat me up about it not being enough money, so we went back and redid it. So we have, we had a little bit. I didn't say it was you.
I was the only one there.
It could have been Diana, happy to be here. But we really tried to look at all of the phasing. What we've identified is there was some savings, there was a little discommunication in terms of what you were told about. There were some savings on a project from the last project that we were able to pull forward, add to the 281, get up to about 450,000, which we believe should probably be enough to complete Phase 6 of the program. And then we'll start to look at the future phases, three different phases, two of which are at the Lost Canyon site, which really aren't an access issue. The Phase 4, which is the most expensive phase of that project, which includes two bridges, and looking at how we break that up into maybe two or three different phases and try to address that over the next couple of years. So I think that, again, we're able to find a little more funding to finish that phase and then, you know, do the best we can based on the economy and available funding to get it done over the next three or so years.
Well, I told you...
Don't hold me to three years.
I told you at the time that we were grateful for anything that we got, and I'm really, I'm really very pleased that you took my remarks seriously. I didn't expect, I didn't expect that.
You won for that.
Yeah, okay. Let me get on to another subject, and that's the...
You want more?
Well, that worked.
The shelter in place, the evacuation issue with the, it's coincidentally, you know, it's connected to the trail, but not exactly. Many fires ago, several before the sand fire, and that's what brought our Fire Safety Council into being, was the issue with the, our livestock in the canyon. And of course, children and families are, and people are more important than horses, although you can't tell some of the horse people that because they won't necessarily agree. But with Mad Gil, and I know when the personnel changes in a fire department, on city staff, everybody comes in and does things a little differently and has new ideas. But back in that day, the shelter in place concept came into place because the prior fire to the one that started it all, the horses and the people and everybody, just the fire trucks couldn't get into the canyon. So with Joe Lindman and myself went around to all the different ranches, and even the individual people that felt more comfortable sheltering in place, made an enormous difference in the next fire because there weren't as many people getting out with their trailers and their horses and so forth, the back and forth. Now that has kind of waned a little bit, and we've talked with Chief Anderson and our sheriff, our sheriff chief of police, to look at that again, because sometimes it makes more sense for the big animals to stay in place and stay out of the ways of the fire trucks. So I wanted to bring that up because it worked very well. And I know that the general rule is get everybody out so the fire department and the sheriffs don't have to worry about us. But it is something to think about and incorporate. So I throw that out and...
Yeah, that's, you're right. I've been on several fires, always in the command center, and the decision to, whether to evacuate is, it depends on who's there. I'm usually there questioning why we need to evacuate, why we need to close down roads, and whether we have to right now or it can wait. The first evaluation is always to stay in place. If we don't have to evacuate neighborhoods, it's a huge undertaking. We typically have, again, challenges with some of the residents. But the first prerogative is always to have people sheltered in place if the fire department feels that the fire is not moving in a direction, moving at a pace, and should that change dramatically, they still have enough time to go in and then evacuate. One of the challenges we have, quite frankly, is the fact that when people do shelter in place, they don't stay in place. You know, one of the things we saw in the sand fires, we had a lot of people in San Canyon who didn't evacuate, but they were on, you know, they're on their ATVs, they're running around the streets, they're in places that they shouldn't be. So getting compliance with both evacuations and sheltering in place is definitely part of the challenge of creating the access and trying to balance the needs of everyone that's there. So, yeah, we'll continue to work with the fire department and try and...
And again, on the same subject, the northwest corner where all the rocks are, there's that big gathering area, I mean, it could be a gathering area. That would be a great spot because we can't build anything on that, I don't believe, but a great spot for the people to get their horses to in order to get them out of the canyon without getting, letting all the horse trailers in. So, because that caused a big problem as well.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Ken, Steph, thank you so much for all your hard work. It's great. Sidewalks, potholes, everyone loves it when they're all taken care of. I appreciate that. When I put my girls to bed, I'm annoyed with their bright LED lights from our new streetlights, but I guess I can lower the shades and all will be well. But in seriousness, we've had, as you mentioned, 10 years of a growing economy, one of the longest in history. Something's going to happen. I wondered, it's a two-part question, what did we learn in 2008, '09? And what are we going to do or have in place for this correction that will happen at some point in time in the future?
It's a good question. So I want to sum up. What did we learn? We learned that the approach that we take to budgeting is effective. We went through the Great Recession, I believe sales tax at one point dropped as much as 25%. And so we went through the recession, we trimmed budgets, we tightened, we tightened budgets, we did not have to lay off staff, we did not have to cut services in a dramatic form or fashion. I would argue that even during the recession, residents of the city did not see a decrease in the service levels. But again, as I talk about the budget and looking forward, the decisions that we're making today aren't just based on what we believe the financial position of cities will be like this year or next year. We're always looking five years out. We have a five-year forecast that we're always adjusting, looking at, making decisions based upon. So it's a very disciplined approach to making sure that a lot of cities get themselves in trouble because if they generate $100 in revenue, they want to spend $100 in revenue. So the city council, for a very long time, has had a very disciplined approach to making sure that, you know, going back to those budget principles, that we live within our means. That, you know, if we plan, if we create expenditures up to what our expected, what we're making today, and something happens, then you got to come back and cut. And that typically has an effect on, you know, the community. And so we always live below our means, so we're always anticipating that our revenues will exceed our expenditures. So we always have money, what we're putting, what we're generating is always greater than what we're spending. We run a lean organization. It's another thing that gets cities in trouble is that they, when times start getting high, they start adding a lot of staff. And one of the most expensive cost factors in a city is personnel. One of the most dramatic things you can do to an organization is lay off personnel. So we run a very lean organization. We supplement our staff with contractors and consultants. So we know, for example, so one of the items was $1.2 million for consultants in our building and safety department. We know that building activity won't always be at the peak of its right now. So if there's a correction, what's going to happen is that workload is going to start to go down. So we want to be at a level of internal staff that can maintain what we think is kind of a baseline level of services. And then we supplement that with consultants and contractors that are more temporary in nature and that we can adjust as we go. So the council has always, again, set aside the 20% reserve. And so I think there's a lot of things that we do, but again, not just look at the current fiscal year or the next fiscal year, we're looking out five years and making decisions based on what we believe is going to happen with the economy and being very, very conservative. And I would argue that we came out of the recession in a better place financially than we went in, believe it or not.
Can you do something about the streetlights that are running?
I'll have Kevin talk.
Yeah, and based on that, I have a story. I just love to tell this story, and I've told it before. During the time when all of these cities were facing problems, and I'm out and about regionally with the lead of California cities, and they would, everybody would be talking, how's Santa Clarita doing? How many have you had to lay off? You know, we're looking at bankruptcy because of all the trouble that we've gotten into. And I just kind of said, well, we're fine, thank you very much. How do you do it? And I said just exactly what he said, it's very easy. You just don't spend more than you take in, and you set aside reserves. That just makes common sense. So I'd love when somebody brings that up because I get to tell the story about how we're in good shape because of how we do our business. And I just hope we can continue to do that, and that's based on city manager and our staff and our council for making sure that we remain in good shape.
Ann, did you have something?
There's not much left to talk about when you get to the end of the line. Just a couple of things. In 1992, I served on C-TAC for the city, and we identified Villa Princess as being one of the primary routes that should be completed. And I'm glad to hear that it's finally starting to move in the right direction. I was really pleased to hear that. Additionally, the programmable space that we have in the city, very touching, in fact, we can only program about half of the requests. And I'm hoping to see in the budgets in the next couple of years to see some sort of development happen at the Villa Princessa Park above Villa Princessa near the rail station. And lastly, congratulations to Open Space and Parks for getting close to 11,000 square acres of open space. And if half the rumors are true about what's floating around, there's more to come, and I'm very excited about that. So by and large, I think the city's doing a great job, so thank you.
Patty, do you have anything?
Patty, yes. Well, first of all, we're always excited to see something for the arts on the budget, so thank you for that. But I really want to thank the city council for embracing the arts and keeping the arts alive in Santa Clarita because we have an amazing staff that comes to us all the time with some crazy, kooky ideas, but we ended up finding some great things to present to you. And I think there's some good things coming your way. And you talk about sidewalks, we were talking about that season.
Yeah, we can vouch for the fact that it's hard to find sidewalks that are messed up because we have a poetry project, and some of the sidewalks that need to be replaced, I was looking for spots in areas where I would really like to see poems, and I kept thinking, I'm gonna have to find a sidewalk that's broken, and we drove around. But that being said, I'm glad to see the sidewalk budget there. And keep your eye out, there aren't a lot of them, but there will be some poems.
Look for poems on the news. And then the temporary art program, we've been talking about temporary public art because we're so excited about the sheriff station and the community center that we're involved in, and some really cool stuff coming up. But with the temporary public art, it's going to be a whole new ballgame out there. So I think that when we talk to people from other cities, neighboring cities, how much you guys do for the arts, it's really, really impressive. And so thank you for always including us and letting us, let your staff kind of go and have a good time with it. I'm not blaming you, Phil.
Okay, great. If there is nothing else, nobody in the audience? Great, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.